Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome. Monday, December 21st, 2020. And I got to tell everybody, this is the safest I have ever felt at a city council meeting. We've got a lot of public safety staff here. I'm glad to see that. We have the first item of business invocation and pledge, and Father Brian Sullivan couldn't be with us tonight, so Colin Brown with St. Benedict's Episcopal Church at 2160 Cooper Lake Road is here with us, and I'd invite him up now.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those whose hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, and grant that your holy and life-giving spirit may so move every human heart, and especially the hearts of the people of this city, that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease, that our divisions being healed we may live in justice and peace through Jesus Christ our Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Item two is agenda changes. We do have one. I'm going to move item K under formal business. That'll be the first thing we do under formal business. I'm sure that all of our public safety staff would love to stay as long as possible, but we're going to get them out of here early. We'll do that one first. Item three is the mayoral report. We have a proclamation, but before we do that, I have a report this evening. Today, I put an update out, kind of wrapping up 2020, and I'm going to read some of that, so y'all indulge me just for a few minutes. Kind of paints a picture of where we've been and where we're going for 2021. As this 2020 comes to a close, I think we can all agree this has been an extremely difficult year, but I think there's also some positives that have come out of 2020. For me personally, I got to spend more time with Laura and the kids. We moved into a new home, and I got to see my dad, who lives in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in a year that I wasn't sure that that was going to happen. The city of Smyrna has had many positives to look back on this year. Smyrna citizens have shown their resiliency and shine throughout this pandemic. You have looked this virus in the eye and remain determined to get through this together. You have helped your neighbors in need through the Support Smyrna Program and other initiatives. I'm really, really proud of that initiative and how that's gone this year. Your city staff has provided exceptional services despite many obstacles, and no staff member was furloughed this year or lost their job. Your city government helped our local students and businesses with internet hotspots, deferred payments, and CARES Act funds. Your public safety personnel kept us safe in an extremely tough environment and even delivered groceries to our most vulnerable population, and I know a lot of you here did that. Thank you very much. We have persevered this year, and our outlook as a city is bright going forward. Some of the exciting things on the horizon for Smyrna in 2021 and beyond include numerous infrastructure and SPOSP projects that have been asked for by the citizens, a refresh of the downtown, redevelopment of South Cobb Drive, a refocus on connecting all geographic sections of the city, upgrades to city facilities to conserve energy, and a continued effort to further strengthen our community by ensuring everyone feels welcome here and a part of all of the great things that Smyrna is doing. Just last week, COVID vaccines were administered for the first time in Cobb County, so there is a light at the end of the tunnel. As we move into 2021 and can look forward to putting this pandemic in the rearview mirror, and as we return to normal, we will work tirelessly to bolster this already thriving community and focus on programming and initiatives that will augment the quality of life for Smyrna residents. This Smyrna community always thirsts for and thrives on the signature events that bring us all together, and in 2021, we can all look forward to a robust schedule of community events as soon as it's safe to do so, including the annual Jonquill Festival, Smyrna Birthday Celebration, and holiday events next year. We will also continue and add programming and events that recognize and appreciate everyone in our diverse community. We will redefine how we recognize and appreciate our students, teachers, and volunteers at our schools with a new and improved Mayor's Education Awards Program. We will continue to keep our residents safe by supporting our public safety staff and making sure that they have the resources they need to be successful, and I'm glad to report that tonight, we will vote to approve raises for our public safety staff that have been a long time coming and are very well-deserved. We will focus on economic development to bring businesses, entertainment, and jobs here to the city of Smyrna. We will redouble our efforts to improve public safety on Smyrna roads through active traffic enforcement and a growing DUI task force, especially in the wake of Officer Ewing's tragic death and an increase in serious accidents across the city. We will work to improve relationships and understanding in our community by launching the Racial Trust Building Initiative. This program modeled after the successful effort in Troup County will begin in February and will include elected officials and citizens. We will... And I've just lost my page. Hold on just a moment. We will continue to be good stewards of taxpayer money and provide top-notch services and will not raise taxes, and I'm proud of our staff for tightening their belts this year to reduce spending across every department to improve our financial position in this most uncertain of budget years. We will remain thoughtful and deliberate about development in our city. And y'all, let me tell you, we have the best people anywhere, right here in Smyrna, Georgia. We have a talented council. We've put a great team in place to serve you. Opportunities are many here in the Jonquill City, and it's going to be a fun time to be living and working here and doing all that we're doing. Cheers to all this holiday season, and Laura and I wish you all the best in 2021. Really excited about what we're all going to accomplish together going forward. With that, we have a proclamation in recognition of essential workers. This includes first responders, medical professionals on the front line, educators, essential services employees, and others. We are so thankful for all of your efforts throughout this pandemic, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Wheaton. He has to read the proclamation and recognize those that are with us to accept it today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm certainly, you know, excited to read this proclamation in. As you indicated in your mayoral report, this is a really, really important thing that we as, you know, leaders in this community and as a community together that we rally around those that serve in our community, whether in the public or private sector. I'll read the proclamation here in a moment. I believe we have a few representatives here from various parts of our public and private sectors to receive this, so I'll ask them to come on up. Sergeant Lewis Defense from Smyrna PD, Engineer Evan McBrayer from Smyrna Fire, Linda Rindell from Galleria Manor, Dr. Tina Jones from Cumberland Women's Health Center, and Rose Sampson from Kroger. If y'all can come on up if you're here, and I'll read the proclamation and then invite you all to offer some comments if you'd like to, once we've read it. Right to the podium there, I'm sorry. Reads a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of essential workers, December 21st, 2020. Whereas the outbreak of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, has significantly disrupted the livelihoods of Americans and has led to a state of unprecedented economic disruption in the United States and in Georgia and in our own community of Smyrna, and whereas the coronavirus pandemic has taken countless lives and has caused physical and emotional suffering, but in the midst of the disaster, many are looking for ways to honor and thank the essential workers at the front lines of the healthcare crisis. And whereas while many of us are being encouraged to stay home or avoid unnecessary public exposure, these workers have a responsibility during the outbreak to continue operations, potentially putting their lives in danger. And whereas the greatest weapon available in the fight against this invisible disease is the courageous network of first responders, scientists, researchers, and medical professionals who are on the front line combating the coronavirus pandemic, and whereas we express our immense gratitude to all those caring for and treating patients across our nation and whose commitment to serving others has never been clearer. Their contributions to society are immeasurable. And whereas we are grateful to all of our public employees who have dedicated themselves to ensure we continue to provide essential services to all Smyrna residents, and whereas we recognize the efforts of our educators, the employees in grocery stores, post offices, social services, truck drivers, and all others that are working to assure the nation and our great city is receiving the vital supplies and services needed to get through this pandemic. And whereas all these brave men and women are the most fearless, talented, and gifted in the world, whose incredible spirit and resolve is helping to save lives each day and is contributing to the well-being of our citizens, now therefore, I, Derek Norton, Mayor, do hereby proclaim that the city of Smyrna expresses sincere gratitude to the essential employees who have been and are continuing to work tirelessly during this pandemic and encourage all the residents of our community to support our essential workers and pray for their continued strength and health of all those affected by the virus. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed this 21st day of December in the year of our Lord, 2020. Signed, Derek Norton. And I just want to also mention, you know, during this holiday season for sure, a time where we all are reflecting and thankful for so many things. We certainly want to thank you all as representatives of various parts of the community at this time, and certainly if you want to offer comments, feel free to at this time.
Oh, come on, Louis. You always got something to say. Ms. Linda, you're never shy either. Come on now.
I want to thank you for that recognition. I feel very strongly that together we can bring about the change that's necessary if we all just do the basic things that need to be done for the well-being of the community and the world. Thank you so much for the recognition. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
To you as well.
To you as well.
Thank you to the mayor, all council members, Sergeant Defense, and all Smyrna. We love Smyrna, and we can do this. We're all in this together, and we will get through it together. And if we put kindness, we will get through this, and thank you so much. I so appreciate it, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
On behalf of the fire department, we thank you for the recognition.
Now, you guys know I weren't going to let the firefighters outdo us. On behalf of the police department, we greatly appreciate everything that you've done for us and continue to do. Thank you.
On behalf of Kroger, my fellow associates and I would like to thank you for the recognition. Thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Can I ask all the essential workers that are in this room right now to stand, please, and be recognized? Thank you so much for all you do. Do you want to get a photo? Yeah. Y'all stay up here. All right, that brings us to our next item on the agenda, land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item 4A, 2020-519, plat approval, subdivision of one lot into two lots, land lot 334, 3.86 acres, North Cooper Lake Road, Benchmark Homes. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Benchmark Homes is requesting approval to subdivide their property on North Cooper Lake Road, tax ID number 17033400190, into two single-family residential lots. The applicant plans to subdivide the property within the requirements of the R-15 zoning district, so no rezoning is required. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the December 14th, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the plat for the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels for two single-family detached homes.
This is in Mr. Corky Welch's district, and I'm sure he'll turn it over to Joey for...
Please, Joey, if you would, give us a background on it.
Yes, sir. Joey Sobbs, planner two with Community Development. It's a plat approval on North Cooper Lake Road. Benchmark Homes owns the property. It was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Board. It was a vote of 7-0. Property is zoned R-15. Most of the property around it is zoned R-15. It's about a four-acre piece of property. Applicant wants to subdivide it into two, two-acre pieces of property that all meet the R-15 zoning district category. Setbacks, front 40 feet, side of 10, rear of 30, and there's a stream buffer in the back of the property that really takes away a lot of the property for development. So we recommend approval of the subdivision in the R-15 zoning category for one lot and two lots.
Any questions, Joey? Any discussion? Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've driven by and looked at this property and seen no real issues. It didn't meet some of the requirements. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4A, 2020-519, as presented this evening. Thank you.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item 4B, 2020-520. This is a public hearing, plat approval with variances V-20-073, subdivision of two lots into four lots for four single-family detached homes, land lot 485, 1.8 acres, 3278 and 3288, King Springs Road, PM Builders LLC. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. The applicant has requested approval to subdivide two lots into four lots while retaining the existing R-15 zoning category. The property is currently occupied with two residential structures that will be demolished. The subdivision will allow for four new single-family detached homes to be built on separate lots. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the December 14th, 2020 meeting. Community Development has reviewed the proposed plat against the requirements of the R-15 zoning district. The variances are necessary to orient the homes along King Springs Road and preserve vegetation and reduce land disturbance of the property. The subject property will maintain an R-15 zoning classification and will yield a density of 2.22 units per acre. Community Development recommends approval of the requested reconfiguration and replating with conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Mr. Lindley's ward, and I'm sure he'll turn it over to Rusty.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, if you could give us the background, please.
Yes, sir. Rusty Martin, Community Development Director. This request is a plat approval to subdivide the two existing lots into four new lots. They will demo the existing homes and build two new, or four new, single-family homes. This went before the Planning and Zoning Board last Monday. They made a recommendation for approval by a vote of 7-0. Subject property is 1.8 acres in size. It currently is two lots with two single-family homes on it. They're proposing to demo those homes and make four new single-family homes on the lots, but they're requesting to retain R-15 zoning classification. They need several variances, two variances, to be able to do that. If you look at the zoning map, the properties to the northwest and south are all zoned R-15. The homes across King Springs have R-20 zoning classification. Here's the proposed plat. As you can see, the homes are pulled up to King Springs, and they will have a shared driveway with rear entry garages behind the homes. This is the location of the existing lot, and then this is how it'll all be subdivided The requirements for the setbacks for the property are a front setback of 40 along King Springs, a side setback of five feet, and that's a requested variance, and then a rear setback of 30. This is the location of the shared driveway, and that'll be 18 feet in width. With this request, the two variances they're requesting are lot width reduction from 85 feet down to 50, and then a side setback reduction from 10 feet down to 5 feet. This is a picture of the subject property, and then the adjoining, adjacent properties to give you some context. Community Development is recommending approval of the requested plat along with the requested variances. We do have some stipulations we'd like to place on the property. Number one, the property shall meet the following setbacks, front setback of 40, a side setback of 5, and a rear of 30. Number two, the project shall have a minimum lot width of 50 feet. Number three, a site distance analysis shall be provided for the proposed shared driveway at a time of permitting. Number four, the lots shall be rear-entry homes. Number five, the development of more than 5,000 square feet of new impervious surface area shall be required to meet the storm water management requirements. Number six, approval of the development shall be conditioned upon the site plan. And that's all I've got. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions of Rusty? Ms. Wilkinson.
Yes. The one stipulation about the storm management, that was a little unclear to me, so can you explain that one with the... You said at 5,000 feet.
If they develop more than... If the site is developed and there's more than 5,000 square feet of impervious surface area, they will be required to meet the requirements of the storm water management ordinance.
Okay, okay. It was, you know, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the driveway, you mentioned it's 18 feet, so is that wide enough if someone was leaving and somebody else that lived there was going?
Yes, that should be enough room for cars to pass each other.
For two cars. Okay. And that, I know in the past that I've had concerns about a shared driveway, but in this case, I think that it allows for parking behind the homes for visitors, it looks like, and then also the shared driveway is wide enough to do that.
Yeah, they were trying to reduce the number of driveways on King Springs down to one, and also provide for the ability to, that you're, when you're pulling out on King Springs, you're pulling out headfirst and not backing out. If they were traditional front-entry homes, that's sort of the issue we would have run into.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gould.
Rusty, I appreciate the design. I think it's creative. I like the homes up closer to the street to match some of the other homes and have a more of a neighborhood feel. But saying that, I got to say I'm concerned about the lot width, and I'm concerned that we're going to set the precedent for the lots just north of that, right? There's two lots undeveloped, two existing lots between this proposed location and the existing homes, so... Period, yeah. I can't say I'm not comfortable with the significant lot width reduction.
I'll go back to... So as you stated, yes, there's essentially three R-15 lots in between, to the north of this development, in between the lots that are zoned RAD. There are, I believe there's 12 lots or 10 lots. I'll go back and check, but above those three lots, there's 10 to 12 lots that have a lot width between 50 and 57 feet in width. So in our mind, the precedent is already there. If those lots, those three lots were to fill in with 50-foot lots, that would be in keeping with what's going on in this property and what is already being established to the north.
Yes, yep, I see that, and that makes sense. It'll be, at some point probably, they'll be contiguous all the way up to Concord Road. I get that challenge of doing that type of lot reduction within an R-15, right? It's a give and take, and I understand that. So always concerned that we encapsulate that into that one area, and that doesn't spread to other parts of the close nearby neighborhoods, because we do use precedent for other decisions down the road, so to speak, so... But I do like the houses up on the sidewalk. It creates a walkability, and the creativity of using one entrance versus four is positive. Thank you.
Any other questions, Rusty? I think you'd like to invite the applicant up. Going out with a bang, Rusty.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brad Thompson with PM Builders with corporate offices at 530 Ridgewater Drive in Marietta, Georgia. The proposal you have has obviously been well described by Rusty. The only additional probably information I can add at this is the reason we went with this design. I mean, we didn't really want to do a cul-de-sac. We, there are a lot of trees on this site, and we felt like the shared driveway and fronting them rather than trying to do a cul-de-sac would lessen the impact to the property. We'll be able to save, I think, a good number of the trees in the front yard as well as the back, so that's one of the reasons. We are in a density of 2.2, which under R-15, I mean, I've developed subdivisions at R-15 before, and I've actually been able to get 2.5 units per acre, so I feel like we're at the low end of that density scale. These homes will be modern farmhouse-looking type homes, and they'll be approximately 3,000 square feet, might be larger, might be just a tad smaller, but they'll all be in that square footage range, and we anticipate these selling in the high fives. I don't know if there's a whole lot more that I can add to what Rusty's already said, but I'll reserve the rest of the time for any questions you may have.
Any questions, the applicant?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'll just say, one of the concerns I had was the side setback being reduced to five in the areas that are abutting the other R-15 homes. I don't know if that's, you know, something you've considered or looked at in terms of... in terms of increasing that, just where it abuts the other homes on the outer edge of this property?
Well, to get the central driveway in, it was kind of difficult to get the houses and be able to get the central driveway in. I mean, if we had done four driveways, I could have probably moved things around a little more. But I don't think that's what anybody wants. And I think the central drive will overcome that now on the property to the north. I've spoken to the property owner to the north. And he was just concerned about, a little concerned about privacy. And I offered to put up a privacy fence, and then he said, "Okay, if you'll do that, I'm good." So, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that's what he said to me. I don't know if he's here tonight, but in any event, that's one of the reasons we did what we did, so we could get the central driveway in and make it wide enough where two cars could pass.
So also, it looked like the current houses are kind of sat up on a hill. Is that correct?
Yes.
So does this other, the property in the rear, does it drop off then?
It kind of levels out, but it will be untouched, essentially. So, I mean, as it is today, now, I can't speak for what a property owner may do down the road. But from our perspective, the front third of the property or so will be disturbed, and the rest of it will be undisturbed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak for or against this item, would you come up now and be sworn in by our attorney, Jeffrey? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. I will turn it over to Councilman Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Rusty. And I want to thank Mr. Thompson as well. We've had a number of meetings, went out and visited the site, had some virtual discussions about some of the concerns. And I think, I'm looking for Rusty to nod, but I'm thinking all of the requests of the city staff and myself have been met. And so with that, I see no further reason to continue. Motion due past is presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. Thanks for doing business in Smyrna. Item 4C, 2020-233, Public Hearing, Zoning Request Z20-006. Rezoning from NS and RM10, conditional for the development of ten single-family attached townhomes at a density of 9.3 units per acre. 1.08 acres, landlot 669, 3302 Atlanta Road. This is Edgeline LLC, and this item will be tabled indefinitely at the request of the applicant. I need a motion to table this item, please.
So move.
So moved by Mr. Welch. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. Thank you. Item 4D, 2020-459, this is a public hearing. Zoning Request Z20-013. Rezoning from NS to GC for the use as a general contractor office, professional office, and batting cage. 1.55 acres, landlot 339, 3515 North Cooper Lake Road. Tracy and Baron Santos. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from NS Neighborhood Shopping to GC General Commercial for the ability to use the existing building as a general contractor office, professional office, and indoor batting cage. A land use change from NAC Neighborhood Activity Center to CAC Community Activity Center is required. The Planning Board recommended approval by a vote of seven zero at the November 9, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from NS to GC at 3515 North Cooper Lake Road with conditions.
This is in Mr. Lindley's ward, and I'll turn it over to Joey for a minute.
Yes, sir. Joey, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you. Zoning Case C20-013. Applicant is Tracy and Baron Santos. As was mentioned, the Planning Board recommended approval of seven zero at the November 9 meeting. Subject property is at 3515 North Cooper Lake Road. It's about one and a half acres. The current structure is a warehouse building that was used for quality tape and label. It's zoned neighborhood shopping, but that use is more of a light industrial use. They are wanting to use it as a general contractor office, professional office, and batting cage, all in the interior of the building. And for those uses, it needs to be rezoned to general commercial. The future land use is Neighborhood Activity Center. Again, it's sort of non-conforming as it's current, the previous owner was using it for. The adjacent property to the north is Community Activity Center, and it's surrounded by some residential land use and other Neighborhood Activity Center land uses. This is the existing property with the one-story building at the back of the property. There's one access drive off North Cooper Lake Road. Parking spaces surrounding the building, and then there's stormwater detention pond on the side of the building, adjacent to the residential properties. We were gonna require a landscape buffer, but there is a sewer easement in that area, so therefore, can't plant anything there, so. This is a picture of the subject property. And adjacent properties. So we're recommending approval of the rezoning from NS to GC for the use as a general contractor office, professional office, and indoor batting cage with two conditions. One, that they shall remove vegetation and accumulated silt sediment from the existing detention pond. And they will record an inspection and maintenance agreement for the detention pond. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Joey? Any discussion? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Come on up. Joey, is that microphone on? There we go. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council.
Go ahead.
My name is Baron Santos with Big Bear Construction. This is my wife, Tracy Santos. We've been residents in the city for over twenty-five years. I've had my business in the city for over fifteen years. We had the opportunity to buy this property and expand my construction business and to also open a indoor batting cage business, something that Smyrna doesn't have, as much baseball and softball as we have going on here. So we wanted to be able to give that opportunity to the local players and families in this city. At the same time, my wife has started a couple of small businesses as well, and she's going to locate her offices within the office part of the warehouse and bring some more business to Smyrna.
Great. Any questions? The applicant?
I agree, we need some batting cages here. But why, what's your connection with batting cages besides, do you have family?
We have a son who plays baseball. He grew up playing at Smyrna Little League. I was a coach there and a member of the board. My wife was a member of the board. We have many friends who have children that grew up playing at Smyrna Little League. We have friends that have daughters that play at Ryan Park. So it's something that we've always wanted to do, and this opportunity finally presented itself.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, if I can put a plug in for the fast pitch softball girls.
Yes.
Make sure, yeah, make sure, if you don't mind, make sure they can spit out softballs also.
Absolutely. We're looking at getting machines that can do both and having the cages set up so they're interchangeable for all the different age groups in baseball and the different pitching distances, as well as having the circle on the flat ground for the softball players as well.
Yeah, nice, nice. Awesome. Thanks. Looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you, sir.
I am too. I've got probably the littlest in Smyrna Little League.
Yes, sir.
He's three in T-ball, and we don't live too far from there. So he's, you know, the kid sits there with his fork and practices playing baseball at dinner. So he's, that'll be a great thing for him growing up as well, so. Any other questions? The applicant? Thank you all for being here. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item, if you'd come up and be sworn in now. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you all, please do make sure you're accommodating to Mr. Gould. He is very curious tonight, so we're gonna make sure we, make sure we answer all of his questions.
Last meeting for the end of the year, gotta get all my questions answered.
Y'all be out of here already if it weren't for him, you know?
Some of us don't understand it's possible to have an unexpressed thought. Anyway, thanks to the Santos, we, I'm glad, glad this has worked out. I know we're helping with city staff a couple of months ago in the closing of the property. And already want to thank you all for the improved look of the facility to date. And look forward to you all having, it sounds like many thriving businesses in Ward Three, so thank you. With that, motion due past is previously presented. Mr. Gould, I presume you're gonna second this?
If I'm allowed to say something, yes. Second it, yes.
Have a motion and a second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thanks for doing business in Smyrna. Looking forward to what's coming. All right, the next three items, four items are gonna be tabled. Bear with me as I read them, and we gotta make a motion and vote on it. Item E, 2019-440, Public Hearing, No Item Vote. Zoning Request Z19-019. Rezoning from NRC NOI to RM10PD for the development of 149 townhomes at a density of 6.22 units per acre. 23.95 acres, landlots 775, 810, and 811, 2320 Campbell Road. This is Inline Communities LLC, and they have requested this be tabled to the January 19, 2021 mayor and council meeting. So may I have a motion to table this, please?
Motion to table?
So moved by Mr. Pickens. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. Thank you. The second part of this is the annexation portion of that rezoning. This is ordinance 2020-22. Item F, Approval Ordinance 2020-22. Annexation Request, Hundred Percent Owners requesting annexation. All tract or parcel of land lying and being in landlot 775, 810, and 811 of the Seventeenth District, Second Section, Cobb County, Georgia. Total of 23.95 acres at 2320 Campbell Road. Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. Inline Communities LLC will be effective January 1, 2021, and a part of Ward One, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. As the first one, this is tabled until January 19th. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Moved by Mr. Pickens, seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. And the last part of this is G. The zoning request Z19-019. Rezoning from NRC NOI to RM10PD for the development of 149 townhomes at a density of 6.22 units per acre. 23.95 acres, landlot 775, 810, and 811 at 2320 Campbell Road, Inline Communities LLC, also tabled till the 19th.
Motion to table?
You have a motion? Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Thank you. Approved seven zero. Item Five is Privilege Licenses. We have one, but it's gonna be tabled as well. License 2020-24. Privilege License Request. License 2020-24 Liquor Retail Pouring at 666 Smyrna Hill Drive. 666 Smyrna Hill Drive. Sparkles of Smyrna Incorporated, Doing Businesses, Sparkles Smyrna. Glenn Cooy is the owner and applicant, and this will be tabled to January 4, 2021 meeting. May I have a motion, please? Motion to table, Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Thank you. Item Six is Formal Business. Finally get to the main event, y'all. We're gonna move Item K up to the front, as we mentioned in Agenda Changes. Item K is 2020-527. Approval of the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendment for Staff Merit Increases, Public Safety Raises, and Paramedic Raises. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the annual budgeting process, an estimate for the annual merit increases and one-time public safety and paramedic increases, effective January 1, was included. The merit amount was included in contingency pending council approval. The public safety and paramedic increases were included in the departmental budgets, also pending approval by council. Staff are scheduled to receive these increases effective January 1, 2021. A budget amendment not to exceed $257,000 is needed to move the funds out of contingency and place them in the department budgets. Half-year amounts for these increases will not exceed $257,000 for the merit increase, $292,000 for the public safety increase, $35,000 for the paramedic increase. Applicable VICA taxes are included in these amounts. Approval of Fiscal Year 21 Budget Amendment for Staff Merit Increases, Public Safety Raises, and Paramedic Raises, and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Can I, I'm gonna invite Acting Chief Harvey and Chief Akry up. Come on up, y'all. This is, I'm proud of this, what we're doing here. I made a commitment to you all, public safety staff, and we're able to follow through on that. This has been an uncertain year. There was no guarantees. But I'm real glad that we're, you all are standing here and we're where we are. What this means, just so everybody knows, it's a three percent across the board, public safety raise. There's a three and a half percent merit increase, up to three and a half percent based on performance. So all public safety staff would be, they could get up to 6.5% raise. And then if you add the 2.5% paramedics, on top of that, paramedics can get 9%. And that, this has been a long time coming, and very well deserved in an extremely difficult year. You know, we try to do everything we can to take care of y'all in these circumstances with hazard pay and all of that. But this is what we've really been shooting for, and I'm really glad to bring this forward. I'm gonna have our Budget Chairman, Corky Welch, handle this item, but I wondered if y'all wanted to have a few words.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, on behalf of our staff, thank you very much for the support. You know, we've all seen the impact on public safety in almost any year, but especially in 2020. We've seen it on the national news. And unfortunately, in a lot of places throughout the nation, public safety, at least, isn't perceived to be supported very well. We've never felt that here. We've never felt anything but support. Mayor, as you just mentioned, it's not just tonight. This is a huge, huge positive step forward, but it's the, it's the support throughout the whole year, and really even before this year. But just on behalf of our staff, thank you so much to all of you.
Pretty rugged, Harvey.
The point is, is this, when you see these men and women come together and work, it's amazing. They show up, they de-conflict, they create solutions. They're professional, they're well-trained, and they're family. I think that's the most important thing. Thank you for seeing us. But we see you too. Mayor, I don't know how many times I've seen you at a fire. You know, a scene, a critical scene or an incident. You showed up when Chris died. All of you showed up when Chris died. Thank you. It means a lot to us. So what you're doing right now, Joe, Administrator, Chief, all the hats you wear, thank you. Your efforts are always noticed, and we love you for that. So in the spirit of family, wanna say thank you. We love you for that. We want to exceed your expectations going forward. We've got a big All-Star Game coming up in July, so we're all gonna be doing this all over again, hopefully without COVID. But again, thank you so much, on behalf of the Police Department and the Fire Department.
Y'all do exceed our expectations every day. Joe, anything you want to add?
It'll be hard to go behind the two chiefs, but, and as I mentioned in the pre-council meeting, the support that this mayor and council has shown us is tremendous. And it has been a rough year, 2020. This time last year, no one could have ever imagined what we as a society have been through, and especially those essential workers in public safety. And I want to say this to each and every one of you sitting to my right, thank you. Our great city thanks you. I thank you, and this mayor and council appreciate what you do every day.
Also see some members of the Public Safety Foundation staff or volunteers. I just want to say thank you, Scott. Appreciate what you all do to support our public safety. Appreciate what y'all do to support our public safety personnel. With that, I'll turn it over to Chairman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm gonna be very, very short about this, but I, this has been a very difficult year for police and fire across, across the nation. I, for one, sit here and I want each and every one of you to know that I, I stand for funding our police and, and fire personnel. And I, I hope and thank everybody else up here does as well. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item six K twenty dash twenty dash five twenty-seven. Approval of the FY twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one budget amendment for staff merit increases, public safety raises, and paramedic raises.
We have a motion. Before we have a second, is there anybody else that had anything they wanted to say? Okay.
Second?
He, he didn't say anything except he seconded, that was good. Alright, all, we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. Thanks for all y'all do. Y'all are dismissed if you wanna get out of here. Look at them all, I've never seen them move so fast. Alright, item six A twenty twenty dash five one five. Approval of reappointment of Ward One resident Sean Garcia to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Pickens?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Sean's not here tonight, so hopefully he's watching online, but I'd just like to make the motion to reappoint Sean for another two-year term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero, thank you. Item six B twenty twenty dash five one seven. Approval of the reappointment of Joel Powell to the Smyrna Planning and Zoning Board for a two-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion, please? Is it moved by Mr. Lindley? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item six C twenty twenty dash five four three. Approval of appointment of Mr. Sean Tinnell as the mayor's appointee to the Smyrna Housing Authority. This is a five-year term to expire December twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve item six C twenty twenty dash five forty-three.
Motion by Mr. Welch. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item D twenty twenty dash five four four. Approval of appointment of Ms. Sherry Harrington as the mayor's appointee to the Smyrna Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a two-year term to expire December twenty twenty-two. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Wilkinson. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Wheaton. Dr. Wheaton, sorry. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero.
Can I say something real quick? I meant to say it at the beginning, but Sherry is a, she's a Ward Five citizen, and she's served in other areas as well, and I think she'll do a great job on the Parks and Rec Commission.
I certainly agree with you. Item F twenty twenty dash five one six. Approval of the reappointment of Ward Six resident Nell Robinson to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I think you had a.
Oh, did I skip one?
Skip one, yeah.
Oh, I sure did. Sorry about that. Item E twenty twenty dash five four one. Approval of reappointment of Ward Five resident Maggie McGarrett to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Sorry, Ms. Wilkinson. Ms. Wilkinson?
That's okay. Yes, I would like to make the motion, and also thank Maggie for her service on the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, and, and with that, I make the motion to, motion to approve item, what number?
Six E.
Six E, thank you. Six E twenty twenty five four one. Approval of reappointment of Ward Five resident Maggie McGarrett to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty-two.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Now, item F twenty twenty dash five one six. Approval of the reappointment of Ward Six resident Nell Robinson to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board. It's a two-year term that expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make, make a motion to approve item six F twenty twenty dash five one six, as previously read.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero, thank you. Item G twenty twenty dash five two eight. Appointment of Human Resources Manager Talisha Champagne as the Civil Service Board Clerk. May I have a motion, please? Motion due pass? Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Is Carol still here? I know she's very excited about Talisha coming on board. Item H twenty twenty dash five two nine. Approval to hire Ms. Andrea Worthy as the Economic Development Director for the City of Smyrna. And I know that she's here, I don't wanna put you on the spot. Do you wanna come up and say anything? We are very, very excited to steal another Sandy Springs employee and bring them over here to the City of Smyrna. But really what we're doing is stealing them back, right? They stole them from us, and we're lucky enough to have them back.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's nice to be here before you tonight. I am very much looking forward to coming back over to this side of the river and being able to work in my own backyard again. So I look forward to hearing more about your priorities for economic development in the new year, but I'm very excited to be considered for this.
And how many years did you have in Smyrna before?
I was in Smyrna seven years before, and I was in Sandy Springs for eight. So I'd like to try to beat that record, beat back over here.
Any comments, questions from council?
I can tell you where I'm, I personally, I'm very excited to, to have you on board with the city, and economic development is such a big part of our conversation, but what we need to accomplish in the coming, coming weeks, months, and years. And I'm excited to see what you, what you can do for the city.
Great, thank you.
I'm excited to, to have you come in, to, back to Smyrna. I remember back when I first got on the council, you were here, and I'm very excited to have you back.
I agree with my colleague in Ward Six and Five. I think this is a monumental step, and I think one of the big differences from when you were here last is that we have elevated this to a department level. So hopefully, with your huge winning record, big things are on the horizon. So look forward to working with you.
Alright. Thank you so much for being here. Looking forward to.
See you soon.
Yep. May I have a motion to approve, please? So moved by Mr. Wagner? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, seconded by everybody. We'll say seconded by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero, thank you. Congratulations, Andrea. Item I twenty twenty dash five three four. Authorization to approve the Cobb Framework Agreement, CFA, for the construction of a silent railroad crossing on Nickajack Road. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cobb County is requesting an amendment to the previously approved CFA agreement for a silent railroad crossing at Nickajack Road. Nearest address, five six one Summer Tree Court. The amendment is required due to increased project cost from Norfolk Southern. Funds to be allocated from the twenty sixteen Splot. Authorization to approve the Cobb Framework Agreement for the construction of a silent railroad crossing on Nickajack Road, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Councilman Wheaton, this been a long time coming. I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, you know, a huge quality of life issue for residents in Ward Seven and adjacent areas where, you know, the, the train that runs through in the evening and at night has to blow their horn because there's no gate there, there's no quiet zone there. Unfortunately, it, it is your two o'clock and three o'clock and sometimes four o'clock in the morning alarm that you never asked for in the first place. So, you know, being able to accelerate this up on the list of priorities, working with the city and, and, and the, and Cobb County, hopefully we can, you know, get this done and get this executed for the residents. It's been a long time coming for sure, and this, this just needs to happen.
I feel like this has been years worked on, and it's a credit to you to, to really get this, get this buttoned up and get, get it taken care of. So thank you for all your efforts. Any discussion? What's that? Yeah, I'm sure Tim has some thoughts.
Well, I do, now that you mention it. Where we lived in Ableton, that, we were a couple miles from that, and we, that noise travels far.
I will say this. This, this particular item was an item that was put on at the last minute by Ron Fennel when we, when we voted on the Splot list. It was an addendum that he put there, but, but I am glad to see it happen down there. And I, I hate the railroad signal, so happy to see it coming, coming to your side of town.
Mr. Gould, anything else to add? Ms. Wilkinson?
Is that why you moved from Ableton to Smyrna?
Wanted to be in Smyrna. No place better.
Alright, before we get derailed, so to speak, let's turn it back over to the Councilman Wheaton.
Exactly. I'd like to make a motion for item, where are we?
We are on six I.
Six I. To approve item six I twenty twenty dash five three four, as previously read.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Approved seven zero. Item J is just the maintenance agreements associated with what we just did. Twenty twenty dash five three five. Authorization to approve annual maintenance agreement between Cobb County and the City of Smyrna for the Nickajack silent railroad crossing. Councilman Wheaton?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, exactly what you said. This is just that annual maintenance agreement between the city and the county. And with that, I'd like to make a motion for item.
J.
Losing track. J. Twenty, six J. Twenty twenty dash five three five, as read.
Okay. Have a motion? Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. We already did item K. These next three are on nine-one-one charges that are annual things that we do. Item L, resolution twenty twenty dash one four. Approval of resolution, of resolution twenty twenty dash one four. Reaffirms the necessity for the dollar fifty cent nine-one-one charge on telephone subscribers served by the enhanced nine-one-one system for the fiscal year. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. During May two thousand one, the City Council approved a resolution authorizing the city to collect one dollar and fifty cent per line monthly surcharges from telephone subscribers within the city to offset the cost of providing nine-one-one telephone services to residents and visitors. In twenty seventeen, legislation was passed, effectively forming a state nine-one-one authority to maintain oversight of the auditing, collection, and distribution of nine-one-one surcharges. Effective January first, twenty nineteen, the State of Georgia, under a nine-one-one authority, began centralized collection of E nine-one-one surcharges. The current one dollar and fifty cent per line surcharge will remain the same, but will, will be collected by the state and distributed to local jurisdictions. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty dash one four, extending the emergency nine-one-one surcharge and allowing the State of Georgia to collect on the City of Smyrna's behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any council discussion? Alright, may I have a motion, please? Have a motion by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item M, resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen. Approval of resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen imposing a nine-one-one charge on prepaid wireless service at the retail point of sale at a rate of one dollar and fifty cents per retail transaction and revenues received by a municipality, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Part four of Article Two of Chapter Five of Title Forty-six of the Official Code of Georgia Annotated authorizes counties and cities that operate a nine-one-one public safety answering point to impose a nine-one-one charge on prepaid wireless service at the retail point of sale. In pursuant to Code Section forty-six dash five dash one thirty-four point two of the Official Code of Georgia Annotated, such charges shall be imposed at the rate of one dollar and fifty cent per retail transaction, and revenues received by a county or municipality from such charges must be deposited in the Emergency Telephone System Fund maintained by the county or municipality. Imposition of the charge on prepaid wireless service is contingent upon the enactment of an ordinance or resolution of the county or municipality, and the City of Smyrna operates a nine-one-one public safety answering point, and the City Council does now deem it in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Smyrna to impose such a charge. Approval of resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen imposing a nine-one-one charge on prepaid wireless service at the retail point of sale at the rate of one dollar and fifty cent per retail transaction and revenues received by a municipality, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute, again, all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any discussion amongst council? Alright, may I have a motion, please? Motion due pass by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Wilkinson. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero, thank you. Last item under formal business. It's item N, resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen. Approval of resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen imposing a nine-one-one charge on post-paid wireline, wireless, and voice-over internet protocol telephone service at the answering point at a rate of a dollar fifty per month received by a municipality, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, one more time.
Yes, sir. Part four of Article Two of Chapter Five of Title Forty-six of the Official Code of Georgia Annotated authorizes counties and cities that operate a nine-one-one public safety answering point to impose a nine-one-one charge on the post-paid wireline, wireless, and voice-over internet protocol telephone bill. In pursuant to Code Section forty-six dash five dash one thirty-four of the Official Code of Georgia Annotated, such charges shall be imposed at the rate of one dollar and fifty cent per month, and revenues received by a county or municipality from such charges must be deposited in the Emergency Telephone System Fund maintained by the county or municipality. Imposition of the monthly charge is contingent upon the enactment of an ordinance or resolution of the county or municipality, and the City of Smyrna operates a nine-one-one public safety answering point, and the City Council does now deem it in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Smyrna to impose such a charge. Approval of resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen imposing a nine-one-one charge on post-paid wireline, wireless, and voice-over internet protocol telephone service at the answering point at the rate of one dollar and fifty cent per month received by a municipality, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Any discussion on this item?
Uh, for the voice-over internet protocol, it's a per, per, per-service charge. Right, per-location.
Anybody else? Alright, may I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion due pass by Mr. Lindley, seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved seven zero, thank you. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A twenty twenty dash five one two. Approve the request for the road closure at Belmont Circle intersection on the north side of Wendy Hill Road, beginning January fifth, twenty twenty-one through January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, weather permitting, as requested by Baldwin Paving Company for the construction of a temporary road for a lane shift on the City of Smyrna. Page six, printed on twelve eighteen, twenty twenty. City Council meeting agenda. Final, December twenty-first, twenty twenty, Wendy Hill Boulevard Project, weather permitting. And item B twenty twenty dash five three six. Authorization of the Community Development Block Grant Expenditure Extensions, project year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Mr. Wagner. Do I have a second? By Ms. Pickens? All those in favor, please vote. It's approved seven zero, thank you. Item nine is ward and committee reports. And, you know, I'm gonna start. I just wanna say thank you to Smyrna citizens this year in particular for helping your neighbors in need, for taking precautions and staying safe. And I wanna say thank you to our amazing staff who's done a tremendous job all year providing services and doing everything that they do. I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday Season, and I look forward to what's ahead in twenty twenty-one. Mr. Pickens?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And as the mayor said, just, it's been quite the year, and I hope next year is much better than this year, and that we have a great Christmas and happy holidays.
Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, other than echoing the same end-of-year holiday wishes, reminder, as per usual, that we're voting at the community center next week. So if you haven't voted next Monday through Thursday, we've got voting here at the community center. So with that.
center, so with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
And you're, and you're pleased with the availability to vote here, yes?
Well, please is a generous term.
I don't want to go down a rabbit hole.
But we won't go down there right now.
All right, all right, thanks, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before I start my comments, I would like the record to reflect how succinct our side of the dais is. Some, some, some others are, are working on things. Yeah, I'm looking at you, Tim. In all seriousness, to echo what, what's been said so far, it has been a, been a challenging year, I dare say the, the most challenging year for all of us in our lives and never have all of us hoped and prayed and wished for and yearned for a healthy and happy and prosperous new year. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. If I can be of assistance, as always, I dare say to those listening at home, folks are not bashful about reaching out, so please, please reach out if we can help with anything and Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna kind of carry on what everyone's had to say. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. Stay safe, stay healthy.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Well, I can, I'm just want to reiterate everything everybody else is saying. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and, and Happy Hanukkah and, and stay safe, that's a good one too, so, and well. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get comfortable here, got a couple things to say. Really want to express my, my appreciation, you know, to, to our staff because we, we think about, we, as Councilman Lindley mentioned, we get, we get some requests and it's really up to the staff and our public safety folks and, you know, that take care of our residents, so they do an outstanding job. It's the greatest asset I think that we have here in our city is the professionalism and the dedication that all the folks that work for the city, you know, that they bring to their job every day, so we're greatly appreciative of that. And also want to thank folks Ward Six for giving me the opportunity to serve. It's, it's a great pleasure, I really do enjoy it and just enjoy being part of the process, I'm thankful for that. And lastly, please be safe, wear your masks, it's crazy time out there, right? So do your part and Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilman Wheaton.
Yeah, just similar thoughts, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, everyone be safe, be merry, be happy and look forward to everyone having a really safe holiday and Happy New Year for 2021.
You know?
Actually, I do tonight. So, I spoke to the mayor and council earlier prior to the vote on the public safety raises, but I would be remiss if I didn't speak to our community and tell them how much their continuous support of our public safety folks mean to us. And I've said this before and I'll say it again, we, we live in the, the greatest city, I would say in this state or possibly in this country. So with that, thank you, community, thank you, mayor and council, Merry Christmas.
Jeffrey? Ms. Tina? Me neither, thank you. Item 10 is show cause hearings, we have none. Item 11 is citizen input. If there's anybody who wishes to step forward and speak, you can do that now. I don't think we had anybody signed up, right? Okay? Anybody out there want to say anything? All right. If not, then I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:14. Thanks, everybody.